My other glasses. Y'all are a blur. All right. Want to say welcome to our commission meeting. What is the date, thirteenth? February thirteenth. Appreciate y'all being here. Just trying to see where's other people need to see. Okay. I see Mr. Robine has got an announcement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We need to schedule a special meeting at which a public hearing will be held to consider entering into private sale agreement to sell county-owned property and provide incentive grant. This notice will run in tomorrow's Franklin Press, and I would like to submit that notice now for the record.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
What's the date of that public hearing?
Twenty seventh.
February twenty seventh at 5:30 PM. Thank you, Lord.
Five West Main?
Yes, Five West Main Street, Franklin, North Carolina, two eight seven three four.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in agreement? Five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement.
Okay.
As the liaison to Macon County Fire Commission, I'm happy to report tonight that I received notification that on January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-four, an inspection was conducted by the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal at West Macon Fire Department. West Macon Fire Department did meet the requirements to successfully complete a nine S inspection. I would like to congratulate and thank all of the men and women of the West Macon Fire Department for their hard work, commitment, and dedication for passing the inspection and their service to the residents of West Macon Fire District and Macon County Emergency Services.
Great, thank you, John. Anybody want to comment to that from West Macon? Anybody there from West Macon? Warren, is he here or anything? All right, we'll move around along. Been all standing for a moment in silence. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Robine, anything on the public hearing?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see. Public comment period. We have two that have signed up, and I see it does not pertain to what I was concerned about, so... I won't have to give you a preface about the public's comment period or public comment tonight because there was a little bit of a thing on email, not emails, yeah, I guess it was. Emails, things like that. We may have some people who wants to express themselves. I had to announce some boundaries on what they were going to say, and no one's here for that. Sarah, where you at, Donna? Your sister didn't come? What's the F R L?
Fontana Regional Library. Yeah. Good evening, my name is Sarah Johnson. I'm from Otto. Can you hear me good? Okay. I was born here and a lifelong resident. I went K through twelve through public school, and I've had my library card since I was sixteen. I am speaking on two issues at once, mainly the funding for public schools, but also the library changes. Because the two subjects are currently competing for your full attention. I am currently homeschooling my son and benefiting greatly from the free services provided by the public library. I have never felt threatened in our public library, not by any librarian, book, or display. The reason I homeschool is due to the incident in two thousand and fifteen at South Macon, which is sadly reinforced by the latest threat at MVI. Thank the Lord that it all turned out okay. But the kids are not okay. It's not, it's more than just social media and cell phones. I graduated just before all that started, and we still suffered with bullying and related mental health problems. Columbine happened when I was in eighth grade, and we've had copycats ever since. I want to send my son to public school, but only if it is safe there. Last time, I said that the board would be taking on too many responsibilities trying to do their jobs while pulling a library out of their hat. And you have admitted that you have had more than enough on your plates than to arbitrate every dispute. You are not focusing on funding our schools. The incident at MVI only highlights the need for a refocus. They need permanent mental health counselors in every school. They need outlets for emotion, like sports with unbroken infrastructure. They need outlets like art, music, something to make going to school fun. They need septic issues fixed so they can focus on learning. It is up to your board to get them the funds so that our children have a setting in which they feel welcome and that they can let their talents flourish. For more children are in the public schools than in the library at any one time. I am opposed to changing or backing out of the Fontana Regional Library system, and I respectfully ask that you refocus county time, money, and brain power on fixing our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Ms. Ingram, I missed you. There you are. How are you?
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. Had a good Christmas. Enjoy it. And you got Valentine's coming up tomorrow and got your sweetie something. What I'd like to say is, I came home from my Christmas vacation, and I was greeted with most wonderful news that we were able to get the funding from the state for our new high school. And I'm so grateful to each one of you who had your differing opinions, but we kept going, and the state said, these people are serious. By George, we're going to give them some money. So I appreciate what you've done. The other reason I'm up here is for, I think there's going to be some talk about the commission on... What is it? Insurance. That the insurance on coming down from the state is wanting an increase. We've had way too many increases, and I hope that you guys will voice your opinion on that increase. I can understand a little bit, but every year, my car is getting older, more decrepit, and it's costing more to have insurance. That doesn't make sense. So I'm leaving with you. Thanks again.
I know I'm not supposed to respond to you, but the insurance commission rejected that forty-two percent increase.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
That gives you happy times now you can go back.
It does.
Don't mean to say too much.
Woo, thank goodness. Thank y'all.
Did you call me from the boat?
Sir?
Did you call me from the boat? When you went on your trip?
Yeah, I did.
I thought you did.
No, I was in, I was in Canada.
All right. Goes out of the way. She called me. I thought she was out in the middle of the ocean. Mr. Manager, additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, these will not be additions other than we'll need to add item twelve F under the consent agenda.
Twelve F?
Twelve F, and that's ordered by the tax collector to advertise tax leads and collect any unpaid taxes.
And who's going to, who's doing that?
We have Mr. Raswell, our tax administrator, here with us tonight. If needed, if it's needed, if there's any reason for it to be pulled from the consent agenda. But if it's, if there's no, you know, that is being added to consent.
And I believe that item was emailed separately, wasn't it?
It was.
Yes.
Yeah, just have a couple questions. Are you going to stay? Okay.
And we need to remove item nine A under reports and presentations as well as item ten B under old business.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'm not sure if it's going to be new business or old business. It's sort of confusing with this, but last meeting Mitch came in and gave his presentation and was talking about the fund balance, and we don't have a set amount. It's just a gentleman's agreement with this twenty-five percent. And so tonight, I would like to get into discussion about this fund balance and setting a permanent percentage rate for the undesignated fund balance.
Would you mind if we held off on that discussion? I emailed Mitch today and asked him to run the analysis of using twenty million to lower the debt borrowing versus putting it in CIP. He mentioned they were working on that, and they're also working on various policies, including this policy.
Okay. Well, the only thing is, is...
I don't think we need to adopt a policy tonight because he's working on a draft for us to consider. And within that draft, we would dump in, you know, the percentage that we all feel comfortable with.
Okay, because the School of Government, their recommendation when we were talking about this fund balance from Macon County, the state recommends that we have twenty percent. And a lot of those in the presentation, they were talking about, what I saw was the most was like thirty-five percent in those other counties. And School of Government recommends having two funds for that money. One for the undesignated fund balance and also the other remainder of the money to put it in a CIP fund so that...
Yeah, that's what we're going to do with twenty million. That's what I'll be coming back at a later date to get you as a board to adopt the capital reserve fund ordinance and establish that with that twenty million. If the twenty million turns out to be best used that way versus lowering our debt, you know, borrowing by twenty million. So we'll be following up with that in the very near future.
Let's see, we don't have any additions to the agenda. We're at the adjustment part, approval of the agenda. Any adjustments? We've done those?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, motion is second. In discussion? All in agreement, raise your hand. Thank you. And let's see. All right, Mr. Dennis Conley. Anybody here you don't know?
No. Good evening, I'm Dennis Conley, and I'm the co-chair of the Macon County Fair Association. With me is Sherri Cook, the treasurer, and Tex Corbin, our longest-serving member. And most of you are aware the Macon County Fair Association was fortunate enough to receive a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state of North Carolina for infrastructure and general improvements of the fairgrounds. And we would like to publicly thank State Senator Kevin Corbin for his hard work in achieving this grant. We believe everyone who attended last year's county fair saw the fruits of this grant in building improvements and safety, and this was the largest attendance we have had in many years in participants, attendees, and vendors. While we improved a major portion of our goals, we are still in need of some assistance to continue these improvements and are asking for a fifty thousand dollar donation to the fair association. Our goal for this additional money is for safety and security. We believe the paving of the handicap parking lot is a safety concern needing to be addressed. We are proposing paving from the entrance of the main building down to almost to the hog barn on both sides of the road and line markings for handicap parking. In addition, last year, we had a scare at the fair when a lost child was brought to our attention, and there was no way to communicate with anyone in the field. Fortunately, this had a happy ending, but this is a serious concern, and we are hoping to install a sound and security system to reach all buildings and fields. We sadly also have some homesteaders who lack our facilities. And last year, we had, for many months, a homesteader and had to about weekly or bi-weekly clean up drug paraphernalia from our homesteader. This is not a good thing for anyone to be out as much as our fair is used. The Macon County Fair is used throughout the year, both for profit and nonprofit groups. Some of the nonprofit utilizing the fairgrounds are multiple scholarship dinners or presentations, i.e. Wayne Prophet Scholarship Dinner, the Hunter's Mountain Ride. We have monthly meetings, obviously, of the fair board, but VVA has monthly meetings there. In addition, the FFA alumni has monthly meetings there. The Mana Monthly Food Pickup occurs at the fairgrounds, and if you've ever went by there on that day, you know the place is absolutely full. The Franklin FFA rodeo uses that to raise money for the students to attend competitions across the state. The FFA lab work is done there. We have four H archery and livestock competition there, and it's also the large animal shelter for the county animal control, Macon County Horse Association, and the parking for Macon County Recreation Park events. And finally, we have free fertilizer for gardeners that come down there and get the spoils of the remains. In addition, we also rent to various nonprofit organizations and far-profit businesses, making space for shows and events. As you may not be aware, we are truly the only fair that we believe in the state of North Carolina that does not have, charge an admission fee or have a midway. So raising money is difficult. If we don't get what comes through, the people to buy us through vendors and renting our facilities, that's our main money. The last time we became, before this board to seek assistance, was over fifteen years ago, and this was to pave the interior parking area between the buildings after we had had an incident with a handicapped individual. Something we are not seeking in financial support from you, but believes needs to be addressed, is the stream between our property and the community building. We have a beaver issue here, and the last time this stream was drained, we saw many beaver tunnels undermining the walkway around the Macon County Veterans Memorial. And this, and this happened a couple of years ago, so I am sure that trails have increased because the beavers are back. We would encourage you to ask your staff to look into this to see if there is a remedy for this problem. We have some suggestions, but we will defer to you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and look forward for your approval of our request.
Mr. Manager, anything you need to add to that? Have we got all the requests and everything? What we need?
Yep. Okay. I don't have anything to add.
Then who you got with you?
I've got Sherri and Gooden Tex Corbin.
Welcome to the big house. Any further information we need?
I'll just add in here, I did witness a little marshy area there between our property and your property. And I will agree, I do think it needs addressed. Listen, I'm thankful for our fair. I'm thankful for the heritage and, I'm sorry, the way to showcase our heritage, more or less, and our way of life. I feel like we're about to enter the budget process, and I would tell you, I do fully support this, but I would just ask if you could let us engage and see where we can fit this in to kind of maybe fit it in this budget process. Dirk, what's it going to take, a month, two months to maybe look into our, maybe our community funding pool and just see where we can find some money? I mean, the fair doesn't start until September, right?
Listen, we're just, we knew, excuse me, we knew you were starting the budget process, and we just wanted to be, to get our name in the hat, is what we're after.
I think that's a perfect...
Because ours is a larger request than most, but we have, like I said, it's been at least fifteen years since we come and asked for money, and I think that was twenty-five thousand back then. And the only reason, the main reason I think it's more this time is we do have a security and sound system issue. I mean, the sound system that's put in there was put in there when the buildings were built, or nineteen, mid-sixties.
Well, let me ask you this, too. You know, parking, when that thing's at full capacity, I'm under the impression that the state highway patrol writes tickets if you park along Wythe Rising Road.
That was true when one certain highway patrolman worked, but that person is, has retired, and we have not had any issue with that in recent years, knock on wood. That don't mean it can't happen. You know, one big advantage, we try to take advantage of the wreck park, the community facilities building parking, and especially, we got it, we fixed our problem with school kids by parking them all over at the wreck park now when they bring the buses in, because that, we had buses, and we had kids running across with the regular traffic, and I just knew we was going to get somebody, I mean, I was down there directing traffic, trying to get things cleaned up to make sure no kid got hit. But we've got that part of it fixed, but yes, parking is always going to be an issue. We need more space, but there is no more space to have.
Mr. Sherrill and I serve on the Parks and Rec Commission. I feel like it'd be nice to bring this up to set at our next meeting and maybe address...
I have, I have brought it up to him in years past, because I used to be on the commission, so...
Yeah, I feel like we'll get something done, at least if we have to figure out a way to at least clean that beaver dam area out.
Yeah, well, I, we had it cleaned out, and they came back, you know. To me, we believe cleaning it out may put some riprap down through there on both sides. I know it's going to be an expense, be an expense, but it certainly, and we didn't know if it could possibly get in with the, what you're doing with the wreck park in your, right now, is to tie that into there while you're doing that. That was another reason we wanted to bring it up now, just if you're doing a contract with somebody to do something, dealing with water now might be a good time to tie it in, but, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of how you do those things here.
I think that's, I think that's a good call.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Texas, good to see you. It's good to be seen these days, right? I understand.
Especially nighttime.
That's what I'm doing up here, switching glasses. I've got another pair to drive in. Okay, number ten, old business. Mr. Jack Morgan.
Good evening, commissioners.
Sir.
Good evening. And others. I was asked by the county manager to look at the Macon County Library for some possible issues with the entrance and other parts of the building. Well, I looked at it, and I realized it's above what I could do, so I contacted two engineers and an architect to come and take a look and give me some ideas, tell us what to do. Well, one engineer came, and he says, nope, I don't want to do that. Then another engineer came, and we spent quite a bit of time, and he said, I'll work up a proposal, and he's ghosted me ever since. This architectural firm, MHA Works, is out of Asheville, and there's an architect that works for it, Peter Looper, that has worked with Macon County before. You'll see his name on a lot of documents. But anyway, what I'm going to need tonight to proceed is a resolution to exempt his architectural services and I'll go over what his findings were.
Resolutions, resolutions coming around.
Do y'all have this? I hope you do.
You might go.
I don't know. I believe it is. Want me to holler a little louder? Anyway.
Y'all hear Jack?
Anyway, Mr. Looper and I spent quite a bit of time out there, and some of our initial observations were, number one, the timber frame quarter-cachere has shifted away from the adjoining wall, the main library, the main entrance. Number three, the second statement is just a statement that that post and beam facility runs through the library. Number three, one of the hammer beams of the post and beam interior seems to be sagging. If you look at that little diagram there, you see it's load-bearing. I don't know if it's... Anyway. My apologies for y'all not having that. Okay, all right, sorry.
Sorry.
Anyway, there's post and beam, you got a collar beam, you got your regular rafters, you got a beam coming down, which is called a, the hammer post, and then it sits on the hammer beam that goes as horizontal. One of the hammer beams is sagging. It's load-bearing. We need to check that out. The exterior sealant joints appear to be failing. Observe numerous sealant joints that have released from the substrate on both edges. Daylight can be seen through cracks in timber frame construction in the vestibule. Below the timber frame ridge line inside, there is darkened wood, right at the peak. When you go in, the front door, just look up, and you see it's darkened for about two feet down each side. We don't know exactly what's going on. Suspicion is condensation, but we've got to investigate to see how to take care of that. And he proposed a three-phase approach to this, and a phase one is just to discover exactly what it is. He just gave a cursory visit and said, Jack, these are what the problems are. We need to consider it. And he's proposing three-phase approach. One is discovery and documentation. And in that, he'll charge an hourly fee, and he's giving us a not-to-exceed cap. They've got to get on the roof. We have to provide access for that. One of the stone columns out front, we're going to have to take the stone off of it for them to look. So there's going to be some work involved by the county for them to be able to discover exactly what to do. And the second phase would be design and production of the contract documents, and third would be bidding and construction administration. So all we're signing up for now is for them to come in, and his engineer, to see what is wrong and what needs to be done to make the repairs. Then after that, we'll determine what has to be done, the design documents to be done, and then we'll put it out for bid to fix. So what I'm asking now, his bid is, is not-to-exceed fee is seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, which I think is a bargain these days. There would be an additional charge, and it would run not-to-exceed two thousand dollars out of a testing company to test to make sure that the black's nothing that is going to be harmful.
You said seventy-five hundred?
Yes, sir.
I keep reading fifty thousand.
No, there's the, let me clarify. The resolution... The resolution, you know, normally, if you're trying to hire an architect or an engineer, you have to put out a request for qualifications, you know, and rate them and pick the most qualified. Well, in this case, since the fee is only seven thousand four hundred and fifty, it's under the fifty K threshold, so we need two actions tonight. One is to approve this resolution, which exempts it from those requests for qualification purposes. Two would be, if I heard Jack correctly, seven thousand four fifty is the fee from MHA Works.
Yes.
But you said there might potentially be two thousand additional dollars.
Yeah.
For.
For testing.
For testing.
Black up there to make sure.
So, the second piece would be a budget amendment for nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars from contingency. We have two hundred and four thousand dollars in contingency currently.
Now, this.
And that is, of course, if you wish to move forward with this proposal.
But in my opinion, we need to move forward with this.
Are you gonna be back up there?
Yeah.
On the side?
Yes. On the visit?
Run down to that early college building.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I'll tell you what to do, I'm just asking, since you're, look at those supporting columns, they're separating, too.
Are they, on the front?
All around it.
And, Jack, I think those are fake columns, I don't think they're weight-bearing, but they are separated, and it almost looks like the pad that they're sitting on is sinking as well. So, that building needs a little bit of looking at as well.
All right, I would give that a look, and maybe I can get these guys to walk over and give us some ideas there as well, while we're doing this.
But this right here, I mean, you got two options with this. You can either spend this money to have it investigated further, or you can take a bulldozer over there, bulldoze place down because it's gonna rot to the ground.
Did you say a new roof was in the capital?
Yeah.
Budget? Based on, it's.
Well, it's gotta have a new roof regardless.
Is that gonna be part of his assessment?
No.
No.
This, this part, the post and beam part, has metal standing rear.
And all the snowkeepers are gone? Not all of them.
Well, not all of them, but this is, the re-roofing is the flat parts on either side. I know it looks like it's got a slope roof all the way around, but there's a flat roof up there that need to be repaired. There, the building's, what, twenty years old, twenty-one?
Wasn't there something wrong with the heating air or something out there as well?
I think they took care of that, I think, I couldn't say for sure, but I believe they did.
But, so you need two, two parts?
Yes, two part. A resolution exempting architectural services for Macon County Library from the provisions of Article 3D of Chapter 130, 143, sorry, of the North Carolina General Statutes. That was one, one part of it, and the second part is a budget amendment from general fund contingency in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
And I'd be glad to show you, gentlemen, what we found, if you'd like to just see.
Sherrill, which one do you make a motion on?
You could do it in one motion.
I'm doing both of them, as.
As I stated.
As she, as Ms. Lori stated, I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward with this.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just like to ask, staying in same metal roof, I mean, are they supposed to last forty, fifty years?
Oh, it's good, it's good, it's the flat parts, it's good, it's the TPO.
The rolling roof.
Yeah, it's.
Final stuff.
Yep, it's done.
We just need them good snowkeepers put back on there, on that roof.
Yeah. And then we're gonna.
It's not a big deal, I mean, right?
No, I'd prefer putting the bar, they just put them with glue on, things on there, and about half of them are gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bars, the snow bars, the ice bars, where it goes, it's one solid piece across.
And as far as the timeline, they said if it's approved tonight, they can start next week.
Let's do it.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second, any discussion? Any more discussion? Vote?
Waiting on you.
Let's see, Derek, do you have anything you need to add to this? Call for a vote? Paul, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
All right, five zero.
Always look to your right, don't look left, Gary.
You're right on this situation.
I'll be back with.
Thank you. That's Morgan, what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
He keeps his patch together. We withdrew T and B.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, new business, eleven A. Let's see, that's Ms. Abby, Ms. Brazwell.
Good evening, commissioners and everyone else. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval on my recommendation for the board, the 2024 Board of Equalization Review, to include Mr. Dwight Vincent, Mr. Gary Drake, Ms. Christine Flag, Mr. Donald Holland, and Mr. Richard Lightner. And that's just to approve the board for this year.
We didn't do that last month?
No, we do it, we usually do it in February. We don't meet until actually March to set the dates, but we have to approve.
We didn't something related to that?
Yeah.
I just asked Derek, I mean.
Didn't we vote, these people, I remember, we'll do it again, we'll make it real.
Let's do it again.
Yeah.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Board of Equalization as presented by Abby Brazwell.
Second? Oop. Call for a second.
You can second thing.
I know, but.
Go ahead. I'll allow you to do that.
A second? Oh, any further discussion on this? Our counselor's already looking over here, so, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Okay, I got you this time.
Thank you, Abby.
Five oh. All right, we've got Dr. Thomas. Good to see you again today, Curtis. Uh-oh, you brought the boss with you, I see that.
I did, I did, absolutely.
You're doing good.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to come for you this evening and just visit with you about the cap of projects, one of which has been ongoing for a few years now, and the other one that's been going on for just slightly under two years, about a year and a half. But I want to introduce to you Kurt Stoddle, who you are all familiar with, and he's our dean of our Public Safety and Training Center, and I want him to go ahead and kind of talk to you about the needs of the fire training facility in the burn building, to be more specific. And then Dr. Barbara Putman, who's our executive dean for our Macon campus in over instruction, and Barbara's a very familiar face here also with you and you know her, so I want her to at least speak to you briefly about the Grove Center in Macon County, or the Macon Project for an additional science classroom, where we were kind enough to be able to receive one point one million dollars from Representative Gillespie through one of the state budget allocations for capital improvement plans. So, we did have some funding there, and then we had some funding from the 2016 bond, as you may remember back in eight years ago, from the state for some of the capital that would go for the fire tower training facility, so.
Good evening, and it's an honor to be here, I appreciate the time, your service, to that, too. And I've got with me Allen McWilliams, who is our Fire Rescue Program Director, and Benji Johnson, who is our Fire Rescue Assistant, also both instructors, and then Mr. Larry Pickens, who does welding at the high school, also the public safety, but he's also Assistant Chief at Calwe Volunteer Fire Department. So, I think it was 2016, we started kicking this can down the road, trying to look for a new building, and we got a visit from a SKA engineering firm out of Asheville stating that the building that was then thirty-three, thirty-four years old was beginning to deteriorate to a manner that it was becoming unsafe to do live fires in, too. So, we, we met with the county commissioners, and at that time, there was approval for us to move forward with it, and it's just taken a long time to get to the state we're at. We've been recommended by the Office of State Fire Marshal to move it out of the floodplain, because we end up usually having about five floods down there a year where it's inaccessible, too. Additionally, being next to the rock quarry, I've gone down there and found bowling ball-sized rocks, which I think has added to the deterioration of the building over the years, not just all that other stuff, too, but burning in a building of that structure that was constructed, you know, back thirty-eight years ago, you can imagine deterioration over the years because of the, what the materials are available now. And not having that facility would be detrimental to the, our program, but also to the firefighters we serve in Macon County. The one thing that they depend upon, because we have that facility here, is that they get to count those points towards their ISO ratings, and without that, those points would not come up. And then hearing the information about the worries about the insurance going up, two weeks ago, Commissioner Mike Clausy was at public safety training, because we were doing training with the Department of Insurance, and he told us, and a matter of fact, he was opposed to the forty-two cent, forty-two percent increase, and that he said he would, he would say no to that increase to the insurance companies. However, if we don't have that facility here, that's gonna be a mute point at that point, and it's gonna increase our citizens' and our businesses' insurance as well, which I know none of us wants to have that. So, but the departments that come out, they have to do eighteen hours of facility training for each member, so we have eleven departments in Macon County, and most of them come out and utilize the facility regularly to get that, so they get the full points towards your ISO rating, because they want to do that not only to keep the insurance rates low, but they want to be prepared when they have to do their job. So it's important that we have the facility, and getting a state-of-the-art facility that's gonna last beyond us, too, is something that we're looking forward to with the technology that we have now, to be able to control the heat and monitor that, and the safety of the firefighters is something of vital importance as well. So, our, our big thing is that we don't want the departments traveling outside of Macon County, we don't want them leaving their districts and having to go outside of Macon County to two counties over to do that facility training. So, we, you know, we're, we're asking the board to continue the support we have and get us to the point where we can start moving forward to get a burn building in before that, the burn building goes out, or we're no longer able to deliver the training, if that makes sense to you as well. So, the, I did get a letter of support today from Calwe Volunteer Fire Rescue Chief Dustin Pendergrass, who also serves with the Fire Commission as well. I've got that letter in here, addressed to you, the commissioners, I'll be glad to share that with you as well. And then the biggest thing, too, is that we recently started working with Franklin High School, and our plan is this fall that we're gonna offer a fire academy to rising seniors. They can go through all the training, except for the forty-hour live burn class that they have, and that would be something that we would do at the end of it, which they can't do live fire until they turn eighteen, for obvious reasons. So we want to be able to keep that here as well. So that's one, thank you, Don, on that, too, that we want to be able to move forward with that going forward. I say that with a passion, is that I'm a, I'm a product of Franklin High School, okay? I'm a product of Southwestern. I'm a lifelong resident of Macon County, and what it means to me and my team that I work out there with. I don't want to, what I, what keeps me up at night is, have we done enough training? Have we done enough? You know, I spent fifteen years with Franklin Fire. I've been in some situations there. Was it not for the training I received, I wouldn't have been able to survive, or wouldn't have been able to save somebody's life. It's not about me, it's about the men and women that are serving our county, volunteer day in and day out, that we, we need to get this put away. You know, we've kicked this can long enough, it's time, I don't want to see anybody get hurt for it, too, as well. Any questions that I can answer?
Are we still looking at the, I think Dr. Thomas and I talked about this yesterday, are we still looking at what Carl Misty brought, brought to us one time when we were studying this, the box or the?
The Connect System, line system, yes, sir.
I didn't hand this up, because it's a good instructor, you're gonna do this and do that after everybody presented, you should be looking at. What I'm handing you right now, it shows just some pictures from the floodplain, you go through that, and you'll get to the Connect Box.
So Curtis, where, where are the nearest training facilities to Macon County? Where, where, you said two counties over.
Tri-County.
Tri-County.
Would be Cherokee County, and then AB Tech would be the next, because apparently, mind your own, and they may have some more information, Haywood's training facility is, is right now not in use. They had some issues over there, but they, they're not using it, I think they may be correcting those at this time, but still, it's two counties, forward for that.
Well, I mean, out of my twenty-one and a half years, I crawled around in that building many, many times, and out the windows, and carrying mannequins, and it's a great training facility, and it's getting harder and harder to have live burns in communities, and, I mean, these men and women, there's no doubt that, that they have to have a facility to, to train you, because it's, it's all about saving lives and saving property, that's the goal with emergency services, so.
Yes, sir. And the one thing, too, with the high school collaboration as well, is some of the departments are struggling with getting younger volunteers coming in, too, and we're hoping that will facilitate that sense of service, if you will, back in some of the younger folks, too, and with the EMT class that we just collaborated with and completed with Franklin High School, you know, that's gonna help perpetuate and hopefully fill some of the paramedic positions coming down the road. And, you know, I know Ms. Schilzen, I've had that conversation, and he's all about, if we can get him interested in something at that younger age and committed to something to that as well, I think, you know, that we're doing them a good justice, to give them a focus point to move forward and grow.
What's the cost on the building?
The cost on the building?
Do you have the? The exact cost on the, on that, it's gone up about four thousand dollars, and I think there's about one point five, one point six million, just on the Connect Box as part of it.
Total project cost for that? Three point, three point one, three four?
No, it's closer to four million, we add in all the contingency fees, things of that nature.
Okay.
So you got, so whenever, when the cost of the building and the construction costs go up, and designer fees goes up, contingency fees go up, and that's because it's a state project, Eric, it's not, you know, if something is local. I don't know where you're getting all three point one.
Yeah, I say that because that was what was submitted for the CIP, and that's what we have plugged. We have this project funded in twenty-five, based on the information.
Those numbers are incorrect, I'm sorry, that didn't, I didn't, are those the new numbers that Joe sent down?
They must be, I don't have them in front of me, we talked about that last.
They're for this year, they're for this year's CIP, though.
But whatever was turned in, would have been plugged into the CIP.
I apologize, if Joe slipped the numbers out, it would be incorrect.
So it's three point nine?
It's closer to three point nine, it's nearly four million.
Three point nine million, Representative Gillespie asked us, what, a million and one, what'd you say? One point seven million?
We got a one point four million dollar bond back in twenty sixteen.
And one point four.
Yeah, and so that money's there, that one point four million, so that would be deducted from the four million dollar cost.
Is it a one point four million dollar for the bonds and one point one million dollar grant?
Uh, no, we got one point, a one point four million dollar bond back in twenty sixteen. The, the remainder of that four million, minus that one point four, would be county responsibility. On the other project they're gonna talk about, they, at one point, the, the numbers we have in the CIP is one point two million with a one point one million dollar grant, is that number still good, Dr. Thomas?
One point one million.
One point two, one point two, three, four for the science building?
No, it's. No, it's, it, about one point five million per total cost.
We better.
On the construction. That's why I'm saying, those CIPs, the, the things that you receive that must have been sent in to Lori recently, um, those numbers you're looking at are incorrect for what I have on my.
Can y'all email us some updated ones, please?
I can, I can, absolutely.
So, the total number, total thing for everything?
For everything? If, if you get to what we're needing right now, we have the one point four million for the bond, which is less than that because of all the things that we've done. We've got the one point one million that, uh, we have for the, uh, Grove Center, the science classroom. So, what we're short is two point three five million that we are asking for your support on to move these projects forward. Uh, if we don't have that support, the only thing I can say is thank you. We'll go back to the drawing board, the programs are dead, the process, the projects are dead. Uh, we can't move them further down to the state to have that moved forward. If you approve the additional financial support of the two point three five million, uh, we can do, re, revamp and make the amendments to the three dash one, which is our construction documents that go down to state construction, and we can put those out to bid within probably the next thirty to forty-five days, which means that they can move those projects forward. The architects, LS3P, is who's working on the Grove Center for the science classroom, and Stuart Cooper Newer, who are architects for the fire training facility. There, everything's been approved at the state, we're just waiting on money and funding if we don't have it.
See, and the thing of it is, is like he said, uh, this project's been going on since twenty sixteen. It's been at the state. We've been get, waiting on approval from the state for two years.
Uh, well, it, it's been kicked back and forth.
Yeah, I mean, and we, we've been literally waiting on the state for two years, as this project keeps going up and up, so.
Yeah.
You know, that, it's times like these you wish the state would throw in some more money, because, you know, they've held this process up, but, um, you know, here we are.
So, Curtis, um, going back to the insurance savings, um, other than the men and women in the fire service, um, this has a impact on residents and business insurance rate. Um, and in Highlands, they built that substation out on the Cassiers Road, the community built that, um, and it was a no-brainer for them for the savings that they had on their insurance ratings by them building that facility. And, and then you're actually going to have, um, there's gonna be an economic driver there as well, because you're gonna bring in other people to, it, it's, it's a.
Yeah, we've had departments contact us, see when the facility, I, I get that regular from fire chiefs, when is the facility gonna be ready, because they know the condition of the current facility, and, and what they're looking at coming in, and when is the new facility gonna be ready to, and I, you know, that's the thing, I, I wish it was three years ago, but, you know, we're here right now, and we wanna get it as quickly as we can.
So, this is not a twenty-five-year budget request, this is, uh, we need to.
There's a immediate need, there, there's a critical.
What's, what's the lifespan on this? I mean, Connect Box, to me, don't seem like it's gonna last forever.
They, they do a liner inside that protects it, you can actually burn inside, touch the outside. We've visited the, the company that, that built it in New York, and they have props in there, too, where you can do backflashes and stuff. The, like I said, the concrete and brick construction is, is not commonly used anymore, and we even put shields, liners inside the building to protect that, but because of the flooding and then the leaking, it's deteriorated as well, and those panels are several thousand dollars a piece, I forget exactly what the cost on those are, Benji, then might know that, and are, you know, time intensive to keep up with and stuff, too. So, you know, they're projecting long, way longer than thirty-five years with this line system that's done this for, forever. And we've actually been, visited New York Fire Department, where they had one in use, and it had been in use for, you know, twenty years there, that they had do, doing that as well. Other than little parts of things for the heat sensors and things like that, but we can actually monitor, we would have, be able to monitor and look in and, and see what's going on, too, uh, at, at this facility, too. Technology has come, so far, I mean, we can image a building now and know where the, to go to, to focus on where the fire is at. And so, that's the whole thing, now they, they've got that construction down, it's pretty good. And they've got it, safety-wise, where they can evacuate all the smoke and everything, pull everything out of it in an instant, and sprinkler system for the safety of the firefighters that are training. Because sometimes we'll get people who get claustrophobic to go in, they get an air pack on, and they go in, and they'll be in that situation, and then freak out, kind of, some of the divers do that, too, and we can, you know, make it a safe environment in the instant to, to save them, too.
Now, the old fire building, it's out there now, it's, it's not usable, is it?
There's, there may be one room that we can burn in, one room that we can utilize now on the bottom floor.
And the latest SKA report, engineer report, suggests not to do that burn, plus not to be on the upper level, because of deterioration of that building.
I think they also, they also stated that, uh, I thought that that building had a lifespan, this is two thousand sixteen, when we're all working on it, and I don't think it had a lifespan after two seventeen.
Right, at that point in time, SKA had asked us to do a two-year plan to get out of that, which would have put us into eighteen, and we're six years after that.
We use, we supplemented with some Connect Boxes up back, but they're not the line Connect Boxes, just so that we could continue doing the burns that we needed to, and then luckily, we've got some acquired structures, we can donate that, that we can continue. That's few and far between anymore, especially with the, if they donate something, it has to be inspected, as best as in some of these older homes, it all has to be removed, and by the time they go through that process, they could just have it demolished on their own. So, we, we do get a few on that, but it's, it's, it's not as many as we used to.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Dr. Thomas, I believe recently, uh, the Aspen recognition that Southwestern's received, I believe also, Southwestern's one of the top ten.
We have, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, just, in the last, uh, twelve years, we've been ranked anywhere from number seven in the nation to number one in the nation, most recently in twenty twenty as a number one. Uh, the ultimate prize for community colleges is the Aspen Prize, which is, um, you have to be invited to it, it's not something that you or I can say, hey, we'd like to apply for this, because it's a million dollar, um, uh, prize package. And what it is really is, it's kinda, here's the award of the Aspen Prize, the college excellent program engages in rigorous two-year-long process, so this, every two years, they come up with this, and they look at our data, our graduation rates, our transfer rates, uh, and things of that nature. And throughout the process, higher education experts engage and analyze a range of quantitative and evaluative detailed applications. And then the Aspen Prize honors colleges with outstanding achievement in six critical areas. This is where their teaching and learning, certificate and degree completion, transfer and bachelor's attainment, workforce success, and equitable access to the college and equitable outcomes for students of color and students of low income. Um, so, it's kinda like the Emmy or the Oscars of, it's the bar set at the highest level to win that prize. We were selected two years ago to apply for this, we were twenty-five, we, we made it to the top twenty-five finalists, uh, and did not make the cut to the top ten, but we've been asked, we have yet to hear what our, uh, outcome is for this year, we've been asked again, uh, to, uh, submit an application, and we did. So, uh, we pride ourselves on accountability and excellence and making sure that we use taxpayers' dollars to the best of our ability to provide access and opportunity for all of our citizens, uh, within our service area. But one of the unique things that I know that, you know, uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I talked about is just our relationship with, uh, the CTE programs here at Franklin High School. We value those partnerships, and I know that I think the CET, or CTE program at the high school probably has about twenty now, because we, uh.
I wanna go to twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
They, they talked this.
And, uh, visiting with the instructional team, I think we have, uh, agreements with probably at least sixteen of those CTE programs at this point in time. Uh, and just the opportunity with the junior fire, uh, going with the rising seniors now, uh, and to be able to go through that program, it just, you know, we talked about it, it'd be a shame if we didn't have the opportunity for them to be able to go through the burn, uh, the forty hours that they needed, once they got, uh, or turned eighteen, so, um, you know, this, this, as Curtis said, this, this isn't about me, this isn't about us, this is about what we can provide for services to our citizens and to our young people that are coming up through our public school system, the programs that we collaborate with and make sure that we have just opportunities for them to take the jobs that are out there.
I believe you were with us on that day when we received that sixty-two million dollars?
I sure was, I was, and congratulations, uh, what a great honor, uh, to have that, and, and it's, really kicks your can down the way, down the road a long ways, too, so.
We were in.
It helps, it helps.
I'm gonna.
Put in for just a second?
Yes, sir.
The big thing about this is, with our ISO inspections from the Department of Insurance, we have to have facilities training, which was eighteen hours. Qualified facility, facility training, it can't be an abandoned structure. It has to be on the campus, with so many acres, I can't remember what.
Two acres.
Two acres, and this facility has to be on, like that college campus. So, we can't qualify any other way if we don't have this building on the college campus to receive that.
I think Mr. Pickens.
We start losing the ratings, and people start losing their, home ownership.
And I believe, uh, we were all in a meeting yesterday, uh, the three people you had with you yesterday, uh, five?
Well, I had, we had five that had completed the EMT, but the three boys was all looking to go into the firefight end of it. They missed this year, I've heard those complaints, because it's starting next year, they would have loved to have been there this year. And the jobs, Clark Chapel's hunting for one right now, full-time fireman, I think Cherokee's looking at a couple more in the next few years.
I believe Cassiers looking to pay firefighters.
Career firefighters, plus hopefully helping out our volunteer sources, too. But the main thing is, if this building's not sitting on the college campus, all the departments in the county, and surrounding communities, Jackson County comes over, Highlands comes down, it's gonna hurt everybody around on that home ownership.
We talked about this, somebody invoked Carl Gillespie's name here a minute ago, when he was a county commissioner.
Yes.
Back in twenty sixteen, and we got all revved up, and we watered this topic to death, and justified it then, in my opinion, but, you know, if we were a poor county, it's another story, we'd have to really prioritize, but fortunately, through some, the grace of God, we've got some money in the bank, in the, in the fund balance, and whether we do it in the budget, we do it now. One of the things I don't worry about the government, we just don't ever get anything there, we just water it to death and give it to committee, and like I say, it's been going on for eight years, and it's time to either put up or shut up, in my opinion. It'll benefit, I mean, we gotta have these firefighters, we're always here, we're short of firefighters, it's getting more difficult, it's gonna get more difficult. And the more things we can do to entice them and the young people to get involved in a service or anything, I mean, whatever, we gotta have it, I mean, it's just, so we kick it, we go on down the road, or, I mean, I hate to talk about something, spend an hour of my night when I be with my grandkid, then come.
I don't know that for a fact at this point in time.
Well, I'm all in on this amount that you give, that kind of Florida, that's what, more than Carl said in his goal day, but he's a politician.
Well. I never get as much money as I ask for from Carl, either.
On this side of things, Dr. Thomas, I definitely support this thing, because as a chaplain, I get to go out with these guys, and I get to see, like, the need for the safety, I mean, what they do, it's pretty phenomenal. So, and on top of that, for this to be a part of the CTE program, I think that's pretty amazing, gives another opportunity for us to get to keep young people here.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that wanna have a career here. And, um, it's actually beneficial, it's obviously beneficial to the citizens because of the whole insurance part of this. So, I just wanted to let you know, I'm in full support.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
I wanna, um, just give you a little insight of, when that engine rolls up on a structure fire, and you grab that nozzle and that hose off, and you go into that burning building, whoever's behind you, you want to make sure that they're not gonna get claustrophobia, and they're not going to. You go into that building with no idea whether that building's going to collapse, whether you're gonna find someone in there, um, and, so, these facilities like this is, um, I mean, it's the best training other than the actual fire, but you don't wanna, uh, train on an actual fire, you want to make sure your team, um, and I've crawled around in a lot of burning buildings, and, um, and you were talking about claustrophobia? Since I retired, I've developed a severe case of claustrophobia since I retired, and I spent twenty years crawling around in burning buildings, and now I can't even go into a crawl space.
And I, and I believe this building, uh, if we, when we're being as high-tech as it is, uh, there's a lot of opportunities for the training within this building for even flashbacks or something that they can manipulate through the technology that you wouldn't have even in, in the old structure currently.
So, what, what was the amount that you were seeking?
Two point, two point three five million.
Two point three five million, and that's?
But that's for both projects.
Well, listen, I fully support this, I feel like from a responsible way of this, I've not heard a number that's actually been adequate yet, I feel like you need to go back to, to whoever has the price of this burn building right, and update your information.
That's exactly what I was getting at, I think if the board would like to move forward with this, I, I think is, uh, okay.
I wait for you to give it in support, you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, if we could just get some accurate, maybe let our, uh, but let us get with Dr. Thomas, get these accurate numbers, like I say, the, what was submitted for the CIP this year is different than what we're hearing, um, I mean, I would like to, uh, whether the board would like to include this in the budget or before the budget, I think we can do either. Um, I think I would like to get the numbers right, you know, I think you had mentioned you'd use some of the one point four million dollar bond, we might need to look at that and see how much money directly that we're gonna be coming up with, and bring that back before the board in March. Um, if that's, if that would be acceptable, just give us time to get.
No, no, I wanna, I need to do it. Number three, change from this.
Okay.
I would almost, I stand here and go like this, basically, the numbers you got, I'm not sure how or where Joe got them from.
Right, and that's not.
But, but those aren't my numbers, and, and I'm not, you know, telling Joe, I need to go through there with what Lori, I know the deadline came up, I was on medical leave and was out of town, and the deadline came up on the fifteenth, they did the best they could with the numbers they, they had from, that they were getting from the architect.
Right.
These numbers here basically represent the cost of construction estimate on the building for the Grove Center, the sole boring sample test, and all that kind of stuff's in there, designer, brick fee, the mortar, all those kind of things, and then the contingency is wrapped into there, so we have total funding available for one point one million dollars, the total, uh, as we see it currently, under, and these are all estimates, because we don't know that they're gonna be final numbers until the bids are actually out, and we open them, that's what the real numbers are gonna be, but we know that these cost estimates are the best that they can be from the architects that we have received, so right now, the total available funding for the Grove Center is one point one million dollars, and the estimate that the architects are coming in with, with everything into consideration that is raised, is one point four seven six two oh nine, for a difference of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. So, that project, as I said, is basically one point five million. The cost of the construction for the burn tower has, and this is all factors coming in, with technology, you gotta put, uh, IT cable, gas lines, move the tanks, do everything that we gotta have, and all the excavation that's on there, I've wrapped it all into one, is three point eight, uh, five nine nine one six. Designer fees is, gone, is two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight seventy-five, for a total of four million, seventy-three thousand, seven ninety-one. Available funding is two million, one hundred thousand, which is our one point four, and yours seven hundred thousand from the original three dash one, with an overage of one million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven ninety-one, you add the two together, it comes up to two point three five million dollars. I'll redo your SIP, I'll redo your SIP, if you want me to, but there's the numbers.
The, the seven hundred thousand you mentioned was ours, too, we'd have to add that on top of this, because that budget preparation is lost.
Because when I put in available funding.
Can I see that sheet, please?
Because when I put in available funding, I put the two point one million on there.
Are you guys gonna take action tonight, or are you gonna wait till March?
I mean, I'm ready.
I just wanna make sure I'm comfortable with what you have. Is this a CM at risk?
Am I com, I am, no, it is not. This, this was, this was a design, architectural design and put out for bids, is the way we did this one. You can do a design build, which we're doing on another project, and then you can do. Yeah, and we're not doing that either.
I mean, that should give us hard numbers on this, we should be able to.
That, that's what those are, right there.
So, what is that, Ms. Lori, three point oh five?
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Oh, the difference?
This is the first time I'm seeing these numbers, so.
Can you bring, can we, we've got a special meeting, twenty-eighth, right?
Twenty-seven, two weeks.
Twenty-seventh.
Could we do it?
Could you have these numbers worked out?
It seems like you're, I mean.
I call them tomorrow and say, can you give me updated numbers, and they raise it another four and a half percent because by the time, see by ten we bid this out? The sooner we like those in, because if you bid it out three months from now, then they're gonna build an escalation figure of about four and a half percent to eight percent on construction costs.
When was this last bid?
Those numbers for the burn tower, I believe, came in about one, two? January, January. And the, and the numbers for the Grove Center came in very late, like November-ish, first part of December. I updated those numbers for, for that request. So, they're, they're fairly recent, within thirty days to forty, well, December through now.
Just to clear my conscience, I mean, I support this project, but I feel like most of these bid numbers are only good for thirty to sixty days.
Are these bid numbers?
Well, those are, those are construction cost estimates.
Okay, so it's not bid numbers?
They're not bid, I'm sorry, they're construction cost, I'm sorry, they're construction cost estimate, not bids, I'm sorry, you're right. If we put it out to bid, it'll be good for thirty days to make a decision on, or sometimes they'll give us sixty because it's state construction. Because it's gotta be accepted from the state and it goes back and forth.
So, what is it gonna take to put them out for bid then?
You, you approving the two point three-five million dollars tonight, and I go back to the architects and say, we have the money, we adjust our three dash one, which is our construction documents that we send back to the state. The county is supporting this project in a tune of X, and they give us the approval and we send the bids out. So, the bids gotta probably set out for thirty to forty-five days, depending on what, and I don't know what the state guidelines are for sure, Mr. Chairman.
What's gonna happen when, if the bids come in greater than what we're, what we're talking about now? We're gonna have to come up with some more.
Have you ever seen, have you ever seen a grown man cry? That's what scares me, I mean, I, I can fine tune these, I, I can do a lot of things with them, they're not gonna change from, from the numbers that I've received talking with the designers. But again, you're exactly right, they are construction cost estimates. And that's including the cost of the building, which we know has gone up about thirty-three to thirty-five percent since the last time we talked to them about that, and then all the other construction costs around there. We won't know those, as I mentioned, real numbers until we open those bids. And all we can all do is ask our higher power to make sure that they come in under what we've got figured out at this point in time because there are no guarantees, I'm sorry.
Well, there's two, two projects in there, excuse me, there's two projects in there. So, the key thing is that burn building, if it comes back at two point three million, we act it over and go back to the drawing board.
Right, it's, yeah.
We need to get this burn building started.
I'm, I'm, I'm ready, so.
So, to clarify, I'm sorry, John, I'm not trying to interrupt you.
Go ahead, because I was gonna ask you.
So, on the fire rescue training, available funding, two point one, that's one point four million, your, your bond.
Correct.
Seven hundred thousand was from the county, which like I said, is no longer appropriated because that appropriation lapsed, you know, years ago.
Okay.
So, the total is actually three million, fifty thousand dollars. So, seven hundred thousand was the county's original commitment, we've gotta add two million, three hundred and fifty thousand on top of that to achieve both projects.
Correct.
So, it's three million, fifty thousand dollars.
So, I didn't know you took the seven hundred thousand back.
Well, it was just an annual appropriation, we didn't take it back, you know, we, we've known all along that when we got here, we'd have to appropriate it, but yeah.
Yeah, and from your terminology, you're just adding the seven hundred.
Seven on top of your two, three, five.
Two point three, yeah.
All the figuring that's going on right now, Lori, you're Mr. Roland, you need to fix up a package for March? Or we, I wanna make sure we've got all of our finances and everything down pat.
I think you're down pat.
Yeah.
I think you're down pat.
However y'all wanna do, I mean, it would, you know, Lori, I mean, it would be nice to, to incorporate these in our CIP, the correct numbers and.
She's going to incorporate.
But if y'all want, are you gonna fund now or fund at budget time?
We definitely need to do it soon because if it changed from.
But it may sound sooner, yeah.
If it changed from, when they turn the CIP in in January to now.
If you did it tonight, we just appropriate fund balance.
It's not whether, how we do it, it's are we gonna do it or not?
Right.
And we got the money, the money comes out of your left pocket, your right pocket, don't really matter. It's still taxpayer money, we've got money in the bank, we're not gonna increase taxes to do this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Might just add to your question, what if the bids come in lower? You save money.
Yes, I was gonna say.
Well, you know, that's just common sense.
I won't just write him a check for three million, fifty thousand.
No, no, because we'll.
We'll operate on a reimbursed basis.
That's, absolutely, that, that is correct, yeah, that's the way we've done the other projects.
Make sure the motion is sound.
Right.
We're saying.
Yeah, we're gonna go up to three million and fifty thousand.
We have to budget three million, fifty.
Not to exceed.
If you wanna move forward tonight, out of fund balance.
So, tonight, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this burn training facilities and not to exceed three million, fifty thousand dollars coming out of the fund balance.
Say it.
Mr. Chairman, can I make just a, I hate to get in your business, but we've got two projects. It's not just the burn building, but the burn building and the Grove Center, okay? As long, as long as we're clear.
It's up to you to keep it a deal thing.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
A little more, I just, yes.
And just to clarify for our record for the minutes, this would be a budget amendment for three million, fifty thousand dollars from general fund balance to cover the Grove Center project and the fire rescue training facility project.
Right, years late, sorry.
No, you know what, there's been some good things that have come out of it, it has taken some time, but we're gonna get there. It will be worth it when we get there.
Let's just get it to the hill.
And not only is it, and there again, just to reiterate, the, it's not just a training facility. Our homeowners in this county are gonna save on their insurance and stuff, so it's, it's a win for all the county as a whole because we depend on fire service, so.
You got your first and the second, so.
Yeah.
I'd be first in discussion. Over vote? Five zero, eight years late, sorry, brother.
I may shed a tear on it, but that's okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roland, Lori.
Now, maybe Representative Gillespie will stop calling these children.
Thank you.
Thank God.
See you, Curtis.
Thank you, sir.
Please, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, thank you.
Resolution for the insurance.
What have I got here with the Cali?
You're under ten B, eleven B, no.
Eleven C.
What is it?
Eleven C.
The Cali was something they handed out with, when Dr. Thomas was talking.
Oh, okay.
And Curtis, goes without agenda item.
That goes in that package. Eleven, what'd we say, C? And C, Abby's done her part, B, we've done that, and we're at C, we have to vote, okay, Mr. Chairman, this is.
Well, when we heard a little bit about the insurance commissioner, there was a proposal to raise the insurance. Residential insurance rates, thirty-four percent across the state, ninety-seven percent on the coast, and we were in at eight point something percent here, and there was people upset about that, and I talked with their attorney about it, and he drafted a resolution to send, Secretary Mike calls him, but he drafted a great resolution, if y'all saying it's in, it's in the agenda packet. I guess the question here is, I understand that they have denied the rate increase, but this is a pretty good resolution. I'd like to just go ahead and send it to superintendent for, what's the pleasure of the award? It's, it's, it's dead, it's. Y'all just scratch this?
Put a scratch on there.
Pardon?
Let's scratch it.
Y'all just scratch it.
Save it for next year.
Save it for the next time around.
Save it for next year, good deal, all right, move on.
Consider the agenda.
I only got one thing, Abby, on, on, what is, do we have a defined method of foreclosure?
We do, so we have rules that we follow.
Is that a brief document or a lengthy? Could I get a copy just for?
Yes, I will send you a copy of our foreclosure procedure. And I don't have that with me tonight, but tonight, as far as what's being presented is, North Carolina general statute says that whenever we advertise for delinquency, that we have to give you a report of how much is delinquent, and you have to prove us to advertise those delinquent taxpayers. Right now, we have two million, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents delinquent as of February the second. That number changes daily, so that was as of that date, and we just need the board tonight to say, yes, you are allowed to advertise that delinquency in the paper.
So, if you advertise it, what's the next step?
So, then after we advertise it, then that's when we start doing, I mean, like right now, we have over twenty parcels being foreclosed upon or in the process, and we have some others that are in mid-process. But there's a lot of stuff that goes into the foreclosures that we have to look at. If you have, there was, so if you have heir property, which means that everybody's deceased, and that takes, to take that to foreclosure, that takes us going to the attorney, they have to do the research, they have, if there's twenty heirs, every time an heir passes away, they have to go back to the court to restart that, am I correct about that?
No, we just have to add, we have to amend the complaint when it passes away during the pendency of the foreclosure.
Okay, but you still, they have to go every time to the court to have that amended?
We have to amend if they're passed during the pendency, yeah, it's just a matter of.
One of the last heir properties we did, which cost, I mean, we have to pay those fees first, and then once that property sells, we get those fees back. But it took three years and it was around seventeen thousand dollars, just for the fees. And that just closed last year, and then we turned around and sold it, and I do not know how much that was for this, right now. And then that settles it, but anytime you have heir property, which, and a lot of people call in and will be like, you know, nobody's paid on this in years, but it takes a lot of money to get that started with the attorney, to look at the heirs, to try to find people to serve, and it's a lengthy process. So, sometimes we try to, we mix in things that, so if we have a taxpayer that is renting out property and they're not paying those taxes, and they haven't, then, you know, sometimes that's where we'll start with those. Because there's income coming in, they can afford to pay those taxes, but they're not, and so we have the attorney's office send a letter telling them that this is their final notice, and then they will be foreclosed upon. That's part of the process of what we do. Our office also calls delinquent taxpayers, they also send out their own letters. But in looking at, you know, all the, right now, for two thousand twenty-three, we have over three thousand parcels that are delinquent for this year. So, we have, and that's where this comes in, we only advertise the delinquent parcels for two thousand twenty-three. So, last year, we did twenty-two, but some of those twenty-two parcels are still delinquent, well, we don't re-advertise those. It's only the twenty-three parcels that we advertise in the papers, and we advertise Highlands and Highlands, Franklin and Franklin, and Nunnahala is in the Franklin paper, so, and it's only real property, it doesn't include the personal property that's delinquent.
What happens if a property sells in excess of the delinquent taxes, where do those funds go?
To the clerk of court.
To the heirs or the owner, it goes to the owner if you can locate the owner and it gets.
I'm saying is they won't pay their taxes, but we settle, we send them a check.
Yeah, after it gets foreclosed upon, so let's say we sell a piece, we throw in ten thousand dollars and this property sells for a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars left over, that goes back to the homeowner. If the heirs are known, then we can distribute it according to the known percentage of the ownership, and those that we can't locate gets tendered to the clerk and then held there and ultimately forfeited to the state.
So, Abby, you, you said there are taxes that you advertised in twenty-two that are still delinquent. When, when do these actually, when are they put on the auction block and all that stuff as far as? I mean, how many, is it two years, three years, five years before the county actually?
And that's where we go in to look at each parcel, we look at the conditions, how much money that we have in our budget to actually process those.
We actually increased that budget line item this year to allow, to be able to move forward with more of those. And I have a check, are we moving ahead with more of them this year than?
Well, like I said, we have over twenty right now that are in the process.
And how old are they, the twenty that you're moving forward with?
They're in various ages. One of them is a person who had real estate that were rentals, and he passed away. We have put a lien in with the court, and we've had the attorney's office send the letters so that they, the heir person cannot sell this property, they're mostly rentals, and they cannot sell this property until the taxes are paid. So, we're gonna get those, but it's a process, it takes time, and they're in the midst of doing, settling the estate right now. So, whenever that estate gets settled is when we get our money.
Is the amount of money that's put into that line item, does that hamper your, I mean, I, it's a shame we have to, it breaks my heart properties foreclosed on, especially in this economy we're in now, it's a terrible thing, but it's just the way it runs. Is the amount of money that you have to work with in that process, is it hampering your ability or?
Well, it just depends because we never know exactly how much it's gonna cost. So, we put an amount in there like from the previous year that we spent, and then, like I said, Lori and Derek have always been, you know, I'll be like, we're at this amount, we need more funds in order to go forward, and they've always been, you know, giving me money from their fund, and that's how we've gone forward, because we just never know how long it's gonna take, like I said, that last one was three years. And it just kept racking up fees because it was in the process. So, another thing, according, back to the timeframe, we don't like to foreclose on a primary home. And we make the best effort to try to contact those people, you know, is this a second home, is this, you know, a rental home? And just to ask questions and find out, you know, and tell them, you have the option, we will accept payment plans. You just, you come in, you make a payment plan, that also gets done through our attorney's office that handles our foreclosures. They have the opportunity to pay, make payment plans and.
Is that solely for primary homes?
No, we do that for everybody, we do that for everybody. But we don't actively go after people who it is their primary home, we ask them to make payment plans. And they're, you know, we try to be very fair about that, because we don't want to throw, you know, we're not in the business of of foreclosing on houses and turning around and selling them, that's not the primary. But if you, you know, I have people call our office all the time saying, you know, how long before you're gonna foreclose? Because in others, in other states. Because in others, in other states, I mean, you're, you're on the foreclosure right after if you don't pay by a certain time. And we don't do that. So I try not to say, you know, I, I give them the offer of payment plans, you know, if they'll make a payment plan, then, you know, that'll take you off that foreclosure list. We try to do things like that, and we give them every opportunity. But as far as looking at it, I mean, I only have three people in my collection department. And we have a lot of, you know, we collect a lot of money, we have different projects that go on. So right now is when we start our foreclosure process, before we send out bills, before we start collecting large amounts of money. And we can only handle so many. So that's a process that, and we also go out and look at the property, we look at the houses, we look and see what disrepair or if they're in good repair. Because if we take a property that is in terrible repair and could become a liability to us, because that gets put on our insurance. And we.
We'll wind up with it anyway.
Well, like right now, if it's in delinquent, then we don't have it. It's not our responsibility. But if we take and foreclose on that, and that's a, you know, a very.
No, we're still hairs here, but how, how does the county ever own it? The county just obligated to title, to transfer the title, but we never take ownership of the house, do we?
If you foreclose on it and nobody purchases it, we have.
We can, so it kinda depends on the property. And so, just to get around the record, you still have to pay your taxes if you're a primary residence, and, I mean, we, that is not, I mean, then we would still foreclose on that regardless. And there's a ten-year statute limitation, so we need to get that go, started before the ten years is up or those years from, start to fall off. So we can only go back ten years. So if you unpaid your taxes in twenty years, the furthest we can go back is ten. And there are properties, a lot of these old heirs' properties, like when we first started doing these several years ago, there were a whole bunch of messes that sometimes these taxes may not have been paid, you know, clear back, way back. And now it's maybe sixty, seventy heirs, and you don't know who it is. And, and that turns into a mess, and so those are complicated. But when we sell it, the, the one thing that gets added to the taxes as part of the lien is the amount of attorney's fees and costs that have been added to it. So if, if it's, ten thousand dollars is owed, and there's five thousand dollars in attorney's fees, and we sell it for twenty, we take the first fifteen, ten for the taxes, five for reimbursement. So, and, and this is where the line item gets a little screwy, and that five thousand that gets recouped, that doesn't go back into Abby's account, that goes back into the general fund account, in which case it has to, it would have, she would have to come in and request that that money be transferred back to her budget so that she then has more money to go into the next one. So that, that gets a little bit goofy as far as moving money around. But to answer Josh's question, um, a lot of times on these, um, ones that the, the county often get, or may get stuck on are the subdivision properties, especially following two thousand eight. You had all these properties, you know, lots may have been sold for a hundred thousand dollars for an acre that was like mule face deep because somebody bought it sat unseen. And it's got, as a result, it's got a big valuation, so the taxes on it were big. Well, they're like, well, the bank won't refinance it, because they won't refinance back the property, you know, starting about two thousand and ten. So they say, why am I gonna pay my tax? So we come in and went foreclosed, well, you know, after, you know, four or five years ago, some of those lots that were sold for a hundred, how many did you want for ten thousand dollars a piece? So the county then comes in and forecloses on it, and nobody wants it for the fifteen thousand dollar price tag it's on it, even though it previously sold for a hundred. County ends up buying it because that's what we have in, we have fifteen thousand in it. We foreclosed upon it, reopening the bid at fifteen thousand, because that's what we're owed. Nobody outbid that, we get stuck with it. So now we're stuck with it. So now we need to get it sold or do something with it to get it back on the tax roll, so it's still about to be on a producing property. So that's how the county can get stuck owning it. The, the safest foreclosures are the primary residence, because you know if it's got an improvement on it, that thing's going to bring more than what the tax lien is. So those are, when we say we pick a choose, we, you know, you gotta figure out what's your best benefit for your back on what you're foreclosing upon. And along those lines, obviously, the primary residence is the one we're going to get paid on, but there's the, the human factor is, you know, how far do we let this go before we start losing money? Because everybody's gotta pay their taxes, you don't get to be exempt, just because, to be honest, just because you can't pay them. So, anyway, that's, that's pretty much how the process works.
I'm over so long. I just feel like maybe you don't have a lot of money in this budget by design, and I'm okay with that to some extent, but I feel like there comes a point in time when this stuff gets stagnant, and it has to go. And so at the end of that, I trust your judgment, your department student. I will say, you said you don't re-advertise. If something's been advertised for sale the previous year, you don't re-advertise, I feel like that should be re-advertised.
Well, by state statute, we can only advertise the current year delinquent taxes.
I mean, if we're about to foreclose on them, I think you need to, I think you need to put that in there.
Yeah, but that's, that you do have to put that in, you do have to advertise that. That does get advertised when you foreclose on something.
She's talking about delinquent taxes.
I'm just talking about the delinquents.
Current delinquent taxes.
Current delinquent taxes.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And I will say, and I'll, I'll quit beating this horse, but if you have a home that's sitting out there that nobody's paying taxes on, that home is diminishing in value and it's sitting out there rotting, I feel like that's something you need to move on. But again, if somebody's living in that dwelling, to Mr. Higgins' point, it's kinda hard to, it's hard for the government to kick somebody out of their house, I will say, I can't really.
But these buildings that nobody's, not primary residents, I got one in my neighborhood.
I gotta go.
When they're, they dilapidate, and then you start, people break in once, then they break in ten times, and then they.
There's one next to my house, I've.
Then there'd be an RV there, jumping, you know, I mean.
Or a, or a.
An old RV, yeah, so it's, but anyway, thank you for that.
Just to clarify, in the budget, uh, if you look at the tax, there's a section of tax revenues, and we do budget revenue for delinquent tax collections.
And if she needs extra.
And then we budget on the expenditure side. So it is budgeted each year, some revenue and some expenditure. Now, there are years that she's over, and like she said, we can sometimes find money within other departments and transfer it over, you know, to get her through the end of the year. But just to clarify, there is revenue budgeted that is specifically tied to her expenditure line each year.
Are you looking for action tonight?
So the action tonight is, I need you to approve the advertisement of the current two thousand twenty-three delinquent taxes.
And that'll come with approval of the consent agenda.
The approved consent has been added as twelve half.
Let's do it, Oprah's coming over. You got it, Josh? You want consent agenda?
Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
So, motion approved.
Go ahead, I'll second.
Motion, approve the consent agenda.
In further discussion. If none, let's vote. Prove five zero. What about, are we going to close session or anything? We can't get out of here.
Let's stay away there.
Do we have any appointments? I guess not, it says none.
We ramped up here to a special call meeting, if we need to go into conversation or something.
Do we need close session?
Is that on the notice?
Um, we can, but, yeah, we, I mean, we can. Most likely, all that's going to be public at that time, and it'll be an open discussion. So, are you talking about after the public hearing on the twenty-seventh?
Is there, was there a close session on the special meeting notice, is what I'm saying?
I didn't notice a close session.
You didn't notice, you don't remember.
Did I have a copy of that notice?
I got it right here. Somewhere there, right here in, uh.
Now that's the.
Is that it?
There you go.
Is that it?
No, it was this.
Ain't no biggie. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Let me have my paperback.
So, no, we're out of here.
Dr. Willey, it's good to see you, brother.
Thanks, sir.
Glad you're, everybody's doing okay.
So we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh.
How long you think that meeting's gonna last?
I told him about it.
What?
No, it ain't.
We've got a motion and a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let's go.
I have a question. Okay, okay, let's vote. Adjourn.
Yay.
All voting no.
You should. It's been reversed by one.